Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for joining us this evening. Michelle, could you call the roll?
Dennis?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
Hollenbaugh?
Here.
Odericio?
Here.
Phipps?
Here.
Robinette?
Here.
Sheri?
Here.
Okay, the minutes from our May 6 meeting were distributed for your perusal. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Thank you. Michelle, do we have any correspondence?
I have one item tonight. I have appointments and reappointments to city boards and commissions as requested by Mayor Osbacher. I will read the list and then we will have one motion.
Okay.
New appointments: Audit Committee, Brian Bouchong; Bike Safety, Jason Cisco and Greg Dickerson; Housing Agency, Ashley Lake; Income Tax, Brian Bouchong; Planning Commission, Bob Waddle; Traffic Commission, Sandy Weckman and Howard Gray Jr.; Wood County Planning, Tom Stalter; Zoning, Jeff Crawford. Reappointments are as follows: Audit Committee, Mark Casson and Mark Hollenbaugh; Civil Service, Andy Newlove; Community Reinvestment, Katie Thompson; Maggie Fawcett; Troy Sonner; Dick Newlove; and Mike Marsh; Historic Preservation, Wilfred Rotabush; Human Relations, Chris Douglas; Akiko Jones, Anna Brown; Income Tax, Randy Roberts; Parks and Recreation, Phil Simmons; Public Utilities, Andy Wagner; Tree Commission, Marilyn Schrude; Traffic Commission, Kent Strange; Transportation Advisory, Ryan Tackett, John Stewart, Casey Mahler; and Visit BG Advisory, Nicole, Greg Denning, Rosa Linda Lee, and Rachel Phipps.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept these board and commission appointments and reappointments?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Thank you to all of these people for filling these vital roles in our community. That brings us to... that was it, right?
Yes, I have no further correspondence.
Okay. That brings us to lobby visitation. Do we have anyone signed up for lobby visitation this evening?
We do. We have four people. The first one we have is Molly with the Wood County Parks District.
Okay, if you could state your name and address, or name and affiliation, or...
Chris Smalley, Wood County Park District. I just want to thank council for granting me a few moments tonight. I brought tonight with me a check for $2,806 for the local park improvement grant that Director Ottley and her crew submitted to the park district. I appreciate all the efforts of Director Ottley, her staff, as well as council, and we appreciate you taking part in the program, your continued partner in this program, and I look forward to working with you all again in the future. I also brought with me a copy of the new signage we're using to identify grant participants. I'll make sure Director Ottley gets this as well. It's a simple sign, goes up real easy, and it's a heck of a lot easier for maintenance staff and frontline staff to install. And then finally, tonight, I have a copy of the grant application for next year's program. We made a few minor tweaks. We're going to eliminate the meeting requirement and do it all via email or Zoom, since that seems to work the best for everybody these days. So, once again, thank you so much for participating in this program. It's near and dear to my heart, and the city of Bowling Green is fortunate to have a fantastic parks department. So, thank you all for your efforts, and thank you, Director Ottley. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Bruce Kitter.
Good evening. I'm here to talk... to address the council about the ordinance for feeding wildlife. I've got... obtained a copy of it, read through it, okay? It needs some work, okay? It doesn't address issues about people that maintain landscape that attract deer, all right? It's vague about if I have a bird feeder, and lots of us do, and they're visited by squirrels, obviously, under this ordinance, the way it's written, I'm in violation of the ordinance, okay? You address feeding by sustenance, and I'm assuming that's because you've got the salt block issue here in town, all right? But that also includes water. So if I maintain a birdbath and a deer walks by and drinks out of it, I'm in trouble too, all right? I just think we need to look at where we're trying to fix and fix that problem, because right now you've caused... this would cause a whole lot more problems, all right? Nothing against the direction we're trying to go, but it needs to be a lot more targeted, I guess, because reading the paper and stuff, we got a salt block problem, and we have wild turkeys. They're gone, I guess, now, so one out of the two problems are gone. And we got the salt block issue that attracts deer, all right? Well, honestly, if I took the fence down around the community garden I run, you're going to have a whole bunch of deer in a certain spot real quick, all right? So, I guess, whatever work it takes, I'd like to see more done to cover it a little more directly for what our problems are. Thank you. Oh, I got one other thing. All right, if you look at the Rotary Nature Center in the description on the website, which is a BG City Parks, the nature center has a window that looks out at wildlife feeding stations. I guess that the city thinks it's all right to feed wildlife. I'm not sure why the residents can either. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Matt Sayer.
Good evening. My name is Matt Sayer. I live at 706 West Gypsy Lane Road. I'd like to talk about the speed on the road again today. I was looking at the articles on Facebook from the BG Independent News in March. I saw there was a speed study done. Thank you all for that. Unfortunately, that was just a snapshot of the year. Now that it's warmer, we're going from spring into what I call summer, or motorcycle season. And I've already... I've seen those ramp up last weekend, the weekend prior. Of course, they're put away in the winter months, and that's more of a problem. I do want to draw your attention to some of the Facebook comments that were posted to that article that back up my concern about the speed on the road. One person says, "I've noticed a ton of people will go under the limit until they get to the fields, then they speed up way over the limit." Someone else writes, "People always speed on this road. It's been like the... for almost 30 years," or more. Someone else says, "So 11% of the drivers are going at least 46 miles per hour on a road littered with houses and children, and the city does not see the issue." Okay, cool. And there are more that I won't bore you with. Let me just get back to my notes here. But, all sincerity, thank you for the speed test. Thank you for that. I also want to thank you for the noticeable speed patrols that came out, or that were immediately after the speed test, or seem to be. Unfortunately, with campus moveout and so forth, those tapered off as well because of more important matters. I understand that, of course. There are only so many police in town that can come by and sit when they have more important things to do. Again, I invite plainclothes police, the mayor, or the council to come by my house with a radar gun and have a cup of coffee with me, and sit down and see what happens when there's no black-and-white parked two doors down, and see what the real speed is. I think that you'd be surprised. Because of the need for police on more important matters and impending ramp up on traffic for the summer, I would like to ask for two speed cameras splitting West Gypsy Lane into sections of three, or into thirds. That would generate income for the city, leave police freed up for other more important things, and keep order on the road. This is probably the best I've done coming here. This is a good day. And I'd like to invite comments about some kind of a timeline for a vote, and hopefully implication... implementation, rather. Any comments from the council at all?
We're just here to listen to you.
Understood, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
But feel free to reach out to us via email.
Okay. I know... I did want to add one more thing before I say goodbye and thank you again. I know that there appears to be funds available for something like this, because when staff moved from the old building to here, t-shirts were bought for one day for photo op when they moved their stuff into the new building. So it seems like there would be funds available for something this important. Once again, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have, and I apologize if I'm mispronouncing this, Sheri Patosnick?
I'm pretty nervous, because I don't like doing this.
I don't like doing it either.
I'm Sheri Patosnick, and I live on Tomahawk Lane. I'm also here for the speeding. Our back faces West Gypsy, and the bedroom, the living room, and our patio is all in the back. And I'm here with... I'm not... they're not here. I'm here... my neighbors have also talked to me about this, a few of them. We call it summer speeding. I know the... excuse me, I know the police sit down at Walmart in the morning. Now, there's really nowhere for them to sit, to be hidden in my section. I am catty-corner to Rudolph Road. And in the morning, one of the biggest offenders are cement trucks. It's really bad. But this is mostly afternoon, dinner time, and early evening. Motorcycles, it doesn't matter. Pickups, it doesn't really matter what they are, but they're speeding. What's sad is my neighbor goes to cut her grass, and she is literally afraid to cut between the sidewalk and the street, because we have to maintain that. My husband has to cut it for her, because she's definitely afraid of the cars and the motorcycles and stuff. On Wednesday, the 15th, my husband was out sitting in the yard with the dog, and just for his own... I don't know what he was doing, but at 5:50 PM to 6:12 PM, the car is coming off Rudolph and going either way, or coming off Sandridge, vice versa. He counted 100 cars passing our house. Last month, there were three accidents in two weeks at the intersection of Gypsy and Rudolph. Two of them, police were called... actually, I called one in. And the other one was 1:30 in the morning, and I know police weren't called that day, because my husband, the next morning, was taking remnants of a car off the road, off Gypsy, and a police car came and saw him doing it, took a broom out, and finished up the job. A few years ago, we'd been there almost seven years. We moved here from out of state, and we like BG. An able drilling truck collided with a van at the intersection of West Gypsy and Rudolph, sending the truck spilling, I don't know if it was gasoline or oil, into that... I don't know if you call it an easement between the sidewalk and the road. And so a couple days later, they had to come and dig out the dirt and fill it in with dirt and grass. I know there's a... like I said, other neighbors are upset. There's new neighbors that are putting up high fences, I guess for the noise. I don't know, you know, what else would be. I don't have a good solution, but I'm afraid someday there's going to be a fatal accident there, because some of them, there's a lot of car parts. I think that's all. I did send... a couple months ago, I wrote a letter to the director of BG Roads with a copy to the mayor, and they did come out and put up two speed limit signs, because there was not one in that section between Rudolph and where the other one is down by Walmart. So I thank you for that, but I know that's not... that's not doing any good. And like I said, I don't know what the solution would be, but I just want to let you know what's going on. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That concludes lobby visitation for the evening.
Brings us to the introduction of new legislation.
Mr. President?
Mr. Robinette?
From the Finance Committee, I have one resolution and three ordinances. First, a resolution adopting the estimate of revenues for the year 2025; an ordinance for cleaning streets by special assessment; an ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to sign a contract with the Bowling Green Employees Organization, BGO, and declaring an emergency; and an ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to sign a contract with the Bowling Green Police Patrolmen's Association, OPBA, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President?
Mr. Harold?
From the Transportation and Safety Committee of Council, I have two ordinances: ordinance amending and adopting Section 38.02A and creating Section 90.18 of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio, related to outdoor feeding prohibited; and an ordinance authorizing the Public Works Director to accept a municipal easement from Thomas G. Gerstholz and Teresa A. Gerstholz and declaring an emergency.
Thanks. Well, I'll go then. I have two ordinances, both from utilities: ordinance authorizing the utilities director to enter into contract contracts for the downtown decorative pole painting project; and an ordinance authorizing the utilities director to enter into contract contracts for an electrical distribution system study.
Mr. President?
Mr. Odericio?
From the Community Improvement Committee, we have a resolution authorizing a partnership agreement between the city of Bowling Green and Wood County, Ohio, regarding program year 2024, Community Housing Impact and Preservation CHIP funds from the Ohio Department of Development, ODOD, and authorizing the mayor of the city of Bowling Green to execute said partnership agreement.
Mr. President?
Member Sheri?
From the Park Recreation and Public Lands Committee, I have an ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to seek qualifications, advertise for bids, and enter into contracts for design, engineering, property acquisition, construction, and other services related to the Pickleball Court project at the Bowling Green Community Center.
That brings us to official reports. Mr. Mayor? Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, council. Just a couple of quick notes. I wanted to thank council for your approval of the board and commission appointments and reappointments. And, Mark, I echo your comments, expressing our appreciation for all those citizens that are willing to volunteer their time to serve on these many boards and commissions. We all know that they're an integral part of the functioning of our local government, and the citizens willingly step up in a time where it's, you know, you don't see a whole lot of people stepping forward to volunteer for things anymore, and I am very appreciative of their willingness to do this. Second, just a quick thank you to Chris and the Wood County Parks District for that grant award. Kristin and her staff work really hard to seek funds for the continued improvement in our parks, and the Wood County Parks District has been a steady and consistent supporter of the parks here in Bowling Green, and I am very appreciative of this partnership, and I just wanted to publicly thank them for that grant award. And finally, I would like to request that city council adjourn into executive session this evening to consider collective bargaining considerations. That concludes my report. Subject to any questions that you may have. Does anyone have any questions for the mayor this evening?
Yeah, Mr. President?
Go ahead.
Do we have any update on the Climate Action Plan?
Yeah, I just actually spoke with Manot about that today. She was... what I think she termed as the... yeah, she's here. Do you want to comment? She knows a lot more about it than I do. She's been actively involved in it.
The committee actually met at 2 PM today to review what we believe to be the final draft. We're making some... just a few minor edits that the committee discussed this afternoon, and I'm happy to report that we've actually broadened the scope of this work. So we're actually re-titling it from just Climate Action Plan to Climate Action and Resiliency Plan, just based on... just kind of the trajectory that we feel we need to go. We're already seeing big rain events and things like that. So, sure, we can continue to work to prevent it, but we also need to react. So, it's a little bit broader scope than what we'd anticipated, but I'd expect here, within the next month or so, to have kind of a bow put on that for review.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Amanda. If I could, I would just like to, you know, once again, point out that, you know, this commission is citizen-led. Certainly, significant staff participation and support for this event. We'll also acknowledge that the timeline involved with developing this report has maybe been a little bit longer than council would have wished. I appreciate your patience. You know, we know that it was initially interrupted by the pandemic in 2020 that put everybody behind, but the committee has worked diligently on this work. And, you know, again, I really appreciate their hard work. There's a lot of hard work went into this report, and it's very, very detailed. I think that when council is able to see the draft report, you'll be pleased, because it, number one, identifies, in my view, the fact that the city is doing a lot of really, really important work as it relates to sustainability, investing in sustainability. Energy is one part of it, but also in our daily operations, our facilities, there are many things that we're doing consistently, and the project... or the report will do a good job of identifying those things. But also, it's an aspirational document that does create some guidelines for the city, city council, future administrations to consider as time goes on, you know, in this very important subject. So, thank you for that question, very timely. I don't know how you knew that. Any other questions for the mayor? Okay. City Attorney, Mr. Brown?
No report.
I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
Traffic speed cameras, Ohio, legal or not legal?
Not.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Mr. Brown?
When you say not legal, are they still just offsetting...
Well...
We get back from the state based on the amount of revenue that we bring in?
Toledo just lost a big suit against them with regards to their speed cameras.
Couple weeks ago, right?
Yeah. Unless we get a couple million in the bank in case we are on the hook for the same thing, then I'd suggest against no speed cameras.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Brown? Okay, thank you very much. Public Infrastructure Director, Mr. O'Connell?
No report, unless you have questions.
Any questions for Brian this evening?
Mr. President?
Yep.
Hey, Brian, I just wanted to thank you and request that you pass along my thanks to those that you assigned to take care of a couple constituent questions and issues, and doing so in such a timely fashion.
Sure, no problem, anytime.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. That brings us to council committee reports. Do we have any council committee reports? Hearing none. I would like to make a motion that we move in executive session for the purpose of discussing union negotiations.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Michelle, could you call the roll?
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbaugh?
Yes.
Odericio?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Sheri?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Okay. So the time is 7:27, and obviously, we will be taking action when we return. So, we'll try to be brief. Okay, so we are back in regular session. Brings us to the reading of legislation. Michelle?
Legislation for first reading? Resolution 3864 for first reading; resolution adopting the estimate of revenues for the year 2025; resolution 3865 for first reading; resolution authorizing a partnership agreement between the city of Bowling Green and Wood County, Ohio, regarding program year 2024, Community Housing Impact and Preservation CHIP funds from the Ohio Department of Development, ODOD, and authorizing the mayor of the city of Bowling Green to execute said partnership agreement.
That needs multiple readings, Joel.
Oh, thank you. I don't have my sheet with me. What do I do?
I move to suspend the rules and give Resolution 3865 its second and third readings.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Michelle, could you call the roll?
Hollenbaugh?
Yes.
Odericio?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Sheri?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended for Resolution 3865.
Resolution 3865 for second and third readings; resolution authorizing a partnership agreement between the city of Bowling Green and Wood County, Ohio, regarding program year 2024, Community Housing Impact and Preservation CHIP funds from the Ohio Department of Development, ODOD, and authorizing the mayor of the city of Bowling Green to execute said partnership agreement.
I move that we adopt Resolution 3865.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Michelle?
Odericio?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Sheri?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbaugh?
Yes. So Resolution 3865 is adopted.
Ordinance 9195 for first reading; ordinance for cleaning of streets by special assessment. Ordinance 9196 for first reading. Ordinance amending and adoption, adopting Section 38.02A and creating Section 90.18 of the codified ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio, related to outdoor feeding prohibited.
Mr. President.
Mr. Harold.
Although I have no motion, may I ask for direction on whether we should have hearings on this?
Well, based on the interest I've seen so far, I think it would be good to schedule at least one.
Okay, then just to let you all know, I'll, I'll get with the clerk to find a time. Is, do you have the calendar in front of you, Michelle?
I do not, I apologize.
We'll try and find a time to, to have a hearing between now and, now and when it gets its third reading.
Now and in the future.
Yeah, we will not have one in the past. Okay, thank you.
Ordinance 9197 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the Public Works Director to accept a municipal easement from Thomas G. Gershutz and Teresa A. Gershutz and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President.
Mr. Harold.
I move that we suspend the rules and give Ordinance 9197 its second and third readings.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Michelle.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Odoricio.
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended for Ordinance 9197.
Ordinance 9197 for second and third readings. Ordinance authorizing the Public Works Director to accept a municipal easement from Thomas G. Gershutz and Teresa A. Gershutz and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President.
Mr. Harold.
I move that we adopt the emergency clause to Ordinance 9197.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Michelle.
Robinette.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Odoricio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
All right, the emergency clause is adopted for Ordinance 9197.
Mr. President.
Mr. Harold.
I move that we adopt Ordinance 9197.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yep.
I just want to, once again, thank the city administration for these improvements. We take that way to school in the morning, and I noticed they've been working on one side of the street adjacent to this corner, improving the crosswalk there, and I think it's really looking great, and it's certainly going to make it a lot safer for the families that are going to school that, in that neighborhood, or just traveling to the bike trail, or whatever else, so I appreciate it.
Mr. President.
Yep.
If there's some way for us to communicate to the Gershutzes that we appreciate their allowing us to do this, I would appreciate that.
Okay. Are they in fourth ward? Any other discussion? Okay. Michelle.
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Odoricio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Okay, Ordinance 9197 is adopted.
Ordinance 9198 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to enter into a contract for the downtown decorative pole painting project. Ordinance 9199 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utility Director to enter into contracts for an electric distribution system study. Ordinance 9200 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the Municipal Administrator to seek qualifications, advertise for bids, and enter into contracts for design, engineering, property acquisition, construction, and other services related to the Pickle Fall, Pickle Fall Court project at the Bowling Green Community Center. Ordinance 92... 01. Ordinance authorizing the Municipal Administrator to sign a contract with the Bowling Green Employees Organization, BGEO, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette.
I move to suspend the rules and give Ordinance 9201 its second and third readings.
Second.
Seconded, okay. Properly moved and seconded. Michelle.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Odoricio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
All right, the rules are suspended for Ordinance 9201.
Ordinance 9201 for second and third readings. Ordinance authorizing the Municipal Administrator to sign a contract with the Bowling Green Employees Organization, BGEO, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette.
I move to adopt the emergency clause for Ordinance 9201.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Michelle.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Odoricio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Okay, the emergency clause is... approved for Ordinance 9201.
And, Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette.
I move to adopt Ordinance 9201.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Michelle.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Odoricio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yep.
Robinette.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
All right, Ordinance 9201 is adopted.
Ordinance 9202 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the Municipal Administrator to sign a contract with the Bowling Green Police Patrolmen's Association, OPBA, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette.
I move to suspend the rules and give Ordinance 9202 its second and third readings.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Michelle.
Odoricio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes. So the rules are suspended for Ordinance 9202.
Ordinance 9202 for second and third readings. Ordinance authorizing the Municipal Administrator to sign a contract with the Bowling Green Police Patrolmen's Association, OPBA, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette.
I move to adopt the emergency clause for Ordinance 9202.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Michelle.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Odoricio.
Yes.
All right, the emergency clause is approved for Ordinance 9202.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette. I move to adopt Ordinance 9202.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Michelle.
Robinette.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Odoricio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Okay, Ordinance 9202 is adopted.
There is no legislation for second reading. So resolutions 3863 for third reading. Resolution declaring the intent of the Council of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio, to adopt the federally approved Wood County Hazard Mitigation Plan as developed by the Wood County Emergency Management Agency.
I move that we adopt Resolution 3863.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Michelle.
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Odoricio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 3863 is adopted.
Ordinance 9191 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing the Municipal Administrator to dispose of equipment no longer needed for municipal purposes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette.
I move to adopt Ordinance 9191.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Michelle.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Odoricio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
Okay. So Ordinance 9191 is adopted, and is my memory correct, was that amended by substitution?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
Ordinance 9192 for third reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 31.34 of the codified ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. Harold.
I move that we adopt Ordinance 9192.
I'll second. It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Harold.
I'd like to read a statement, and then genuinely request that council have a dialogue with respect to this particular piece of legislation. I think that would be appropriate, and I think the collective input from the group may result in better legislation. So communication is very important. This is especially true when it comes to decisions we need to make related to legislation. Personally, I think we need to err on the side of providing opportunity for discussion. Taking time to make decisions is also important. Trying to minimize the times where we, as a council, because of artificial time constraints, are forced to make a decision when there's no harm in taking extra time to reflect and research would seem prudent as well. Let me give two examples. First, last year, there was legislation introduced that was time-sensitive. Because of this, there was a need to suspend the rules and give legislation its third reading. Existing council parliamentary rules, in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, prohibited discussion on the motion to suspend the rules. This prevented legitimate discussion. As a second example, toward the end of last year, there was legislation that had been tabled to accommodate a public hearing date, as I recall. So before council meeting, there was a public hearing where additional factors were brought up. Because the legislation had been tabled, it could not be tabled again. As a result, the new information could not be fully considered, at least by me. There was no time to take the new information and incorporate it into possibly modified legislation. This was very frustrating to me. Other than the rule that legislation cannot be retabled, there was not a pressing need to pass the legislation that night. I think the quality of the legislation suffered as a result. These are instances that can be addressed by this, by this ordinance, which allows for discussion, for motions to suspend the rules, and allows for legislation to be retabled. Let's see. The main arguments in favor were communication and improved legislation. The main arguments against is most of the time, the changes would not be needed. Discussion suspending the rules or tabling legislation could get out of hand. Having the ability to retable legislation may keep council from making decisions, and if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Obviously, I'm in favor of the legislation. I don't have any intention of setting up any straw person. Hopefully, you know me well enough to be confident that I'm trying to supply you with information to help you decide how to vote. Let me briefly cover each of the three, the four arguments against the legislation, and I realize you know me well enough to know that I don't really know what the word briefly means. One, or A, most of the time, the changes would not be needed, but that should not be an issue in the vast majority of cases. B, this year, I'll probably attend my 700th Bowling Green City Council meeting. I found that previous council members have almost always conducted themselves in a very civil manner. There's been a consistent respect for the parliamentary process, with occasional missteps, but done mostly without nefarious motive. I do not think the Bowling Green City Council meetings will be disrupted by the proposed changes. The changes allow us to tailor the rules to better fit our needs and character. And if you just go to YouTube and, and Google City Council meetings, or search on City Council meetings, you'll see some meetings that are not as disciplined as ours. C, it could slow things down, although that wouldn't necessarily be a bad thing. We had the understanding for decades that we were able to retable legislation, and that didn't seem to be a problem in the vast majority of cases. And then the fourth, D, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. I would humbly submit to you that it is kind of broke by stifling, stifling's too strong a word, by restricting communication and artificially accelerating timelines. Even if it's not a little broke, I have a red flag whenever somebody says, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, because that can actually result in missed opportunity for improving something. So in sum, hit, believe it or not, past and current Bowling Green City Council members have shown maturity in the conduct of meetings. Additional discourse pertaining to motions to suspend and/or table legislation would not be abused, but would foster communication and thereby increase the prospects of wide decisions. And the ability to retable legislation would allow for more time to fashion and, and decide upon legislation if needed. And we have the ability to reverse these changes if they don't work as planned. So those were the, the rationale for the legislation. Now, I have gotten very limited feedback on, on this, and there may be some that don't like the, having the ability to discuss suspending the rules, and there may be some that don't like the idea of retabling. So I think this would be a, a real good opportunity to have that discussion, to see if both items would be something we can approve, or maybe one of them. Thank you for the time, the extra time, Mark.
Yeah. Well, as, as I let you know before this was introduced, I'm not a big fan of these changes, and I can't speak for past council presidents or future council presidents, but I just know that sometimes we need encouragement to vote on things. Sometimes issues move a little too slowly for, for people's likings, and, you know, so in that sense, I like that we have to, sometimes we get into a position, especially with a controversial issue, where we are forced to vote yes or no on something. And the way the process works, if we vote yes on something, and it's not perfect, we can, the very next meeting, bring forward changes to that legislation. Or if we are forced to vote something down because we feel it's too flawed in its current form, at the very next meeting, we can bring forward, you know, a new corrected, improved piece of legislation. I just, I, I feel that the system under which we have been working is working, and I kind of hesitate to make changes to the basic rules of order. I just envision a time in the future where a city council, maybe it's 15 years from I just envision a time in the future where a city council, maybe it's 15 years from now, they go, "Why do we do this this way? This is not what it says in Robert's Rules of Order." And then they end up just changing it back because they think they've just been doing it wrong all this time. So I'm going to vote no. I love dialogue. I love producing good legislation, but I just feel that this is unnecessary.
Mr. President? Just two brief things. I don't want to monopolize the time. One, first of all, if it does come up in 15 years, I'll...
You'll probably still be here.
Yeah, I'll let them know. Second, perhaps, and I had not thought of this, and this is actually a great example of the advantage of having dialogue, is you make a good point about having a balance between continually retabling something and not making a decision. So what if we were to alter this so that a motion to retable would pass if there is a 3/4 vote? That way, what happens is we still have that tool, but it's harder to use because a supermajority would be needed. It's best of both worlds. What do you think of that?
I'm a no vote.
You're still a no?
I'm still a no vote.
Mr. President, can I ask a couple of clarifying questions?
Yep.
What were the two votes that you were alluding to in your remarks, Bill?
Yeah, the one was last summer when there was legislation put forth, I think it was a resolution, to have council take a stand on one of the state issues that was up for a vote. And because of the way that things were introduced, it would have gotten its third reading after the actual election. And because of the current situation where you can't have discussion about suspending the rules, that discussion wasn't allowed to occur. And... I recall being on the receiving end of that. That did make me unhappy.
Well, yeah.
And it made me unhappy, too, because, again, we want to have discussion. And there were other reasons for unhappiness, as I recall. And then the other one, I, it was toward the end of last year, and it had to do, if I remember correctly, it had to do with, perhaps it was the grandfathering, because I remember there was some issues that were brought up, I believe by Rachel, that were really good points. But because we had to vote on it that evening, I found myself in a very difficult position where I wanted the opportunity to really take that extra information that came sort of at the last moment, and just because of the nature of the scheduling of the public hearing. I wanted to take that and use that and reflect on it, and perhaps use it to modify the legislation. But because we had to vote on it that night, I had to make a decision with what I would consider incomplete reflection. And it's something that would be completely avoidable if we had the ability to retable.
Okay. And I was on the losing end of that one.
Yeah, that's right. So I've got a question about Robert's Rules. I don't know if this is Hunter or maybe Councilman Robinette. So we've got two tools. There's tabling or postponing or tabling to a date certain. Can those be used? I guess, for example, could we postpone a question until June 15th, whatever the meeting is, and then at that meeting, table it until the next official meeting? Or vice versa?
Councilman Robinette? You, essentially, you have, if I may, before he goes, essentially, you have two competing philosophies here, right? You have our charter, which says, "Thou shalt proceed," by Robert's Rules of Order. But then you also have a provision that says, "You can change those rules as you see fit." So, yes, this is, not to directly answer your question, but if you are going to change the rules to what Councilman Harold wants to do, this is how you do it. Not that I'm saying you should or should not do that, but do you have an opinion on that question?
Well, my only opinion is I think Robert's Rules of Orders provides all the tools we need to do whatever it is we want to do, including timing of postponed meetings, making sure that they happen in a timeframe that allows for discussion. I don't see anything in Robert's Rules of Orders that stops that. As a matter of fact, it facilitates that. So I think the tools that we're seeking are already in existence in this document, Robert's Rules of Order document.
I support that position. My experience with Robert's Rules is that it's designed to facilitate action even in a contentious environment. So the rules are sometimes cumbersome, but always push forward for the vote. There's even rules about how discussion happens and the order in which discussion happens and when a question can be called. So it's, although I'm generally supportive of this legislation, I find myself deferring to the really lengthy use of Robert's Rules of Orders in so many different situations. It's just very functional.
Robert's, the way that it, the, Robert's Rules of Order does not allow for discussion on motions to suspend the rules. The powers that be, whenever they made the changes, where we have Section 31.33 of our ordinances for amendment of rules, gives us the option to more specifically tailor make our rules to fit our particular situation and our character. So I certainly am not going to be a, I'm not going to critique Robert's Rules of Order. It's been in existence for a very, very long time, and there's good reason for that. But I would like to take advantage of the ability for us to tailor make it a little bit more, to facilitate communication and more timely decisions. So I'm perfectly comfortable with Robert's, but also have the ability to tweak it, to have it meet our needs a little bit more. But I do appreciate the thought that each of you has put into it.
Mr. President?
Yep.
Bill, I think, I mean, I think I can support making debatable motion to suspend the rules and a motion to table legislation and table legislation to a date certain. But the piece on retabling again, you know, I don't have as much experience on council as you do, but through the four or five years I've been here, that does not strike me as a problem that needs fixed. But, I mean, that first piece on making those motions debatable, you have my support there.
I would agree with that.
Okay. What do others think about the tabling portion? And the reason I'm asking is to give myself some time to figure out whether to amend my legislation to drop the tabling portion. So I think I understand where Mark's coming from. Anyone else in opposition to allowing retabling? And if you are, would the ability to have that retabling motion be only passed with a supermajority to have movement toward Mark's position? Any thoughts on this? And again, I appreciate the chance to kind of formulate this on the go as we're doing this. So by the silence, all of you are overwhelmingly in favor of the retabling portion.
I've already said how I feel about it.
Right, I appreciate the candor. All right, well, Rachel's checking the time, so I better...
Oh, nope. I was not, I'm sorry.
All right, well, I guess what I will do is, you know, there is a provision in Robert's to take it a section at a time, but we haven't really done that, so I'm not real comfortable with the procedure for doing that. So what I will do is, there is a motion to adopt that has been made and seconded, and I can make a motion, actually, to, since this can only pass if we have a supermajority, because of the way that amendment of rules, it says, except by 2/3 vote, I'm getting the vibe that perhaps this will not pass with the tabling portion in it. So I will make a motion that we amend this ordinance to drop Section 2, which has to do with motion to, yeah, to drop Section 2.
Second.
Bill, Mr. President? You mean drop B, your new Section B?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, B. That's, thank you very much. Is that okay with you, Joel? I meant B.
Second.
Yeah.
Properly moved and seconded. So the current motion is to withdraw B?
Correct.
Okay. Is there any discussion on withdrawing B?
So we would just be keeping, Bill, A, 1, and 2?
Correct.
Okay.
And actually, A 1, I think, is pretty much already in place. Yeah.
Okay, I'm not hearing any discussion on that. So this is a vote to drop B?
Correct.
Okay. Michelle?
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbaugh?
No.
Odoricio?
No.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
No.
Sherri?
No.
Dennis?
Yes.
Okay, so B has not been dropped.
Correct. And we revert back to the original motion, which was the whole shebang.
Okay. All right, Michelle?
Hollenbaugh?
No.
Odoricio?
No.
Phipps?
No.
Robinette?
No.
Sherri?
No.
Dennis?
No.
Harold?
Oops, sorry. Didn't mean to step on it.
That's quite all right.
All right, so then ordinance 9192 does not pass.
And Mr. President, just add one added note, and that is... I'm sorry, Mr. Harold, to clarify, your vote on that was? No, I'm sorry. Okay. Yeah. No, my answer is yes. I voted in favor of...
You said no, now I'm...
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that very much.
I'm using my Jedi mind tricks.
Yeah, it's working. It's weak-minded. To be clear, your vote is yes. My vote is yes. I voted yes, so it was not approved by a vote of 1 to 6. And I just wanted to let you know that I have, on occasion, in both my past being on council, been on the case where I was the lone vote and everyone else voted the other way. But I think this might be a first, whereas before, I'd only missed by three votes. Since it's a supermajority, I missed this puppy by four votes.
See, it just goes to show, the more time you spend on council, the more milestones you accomplish.
There you go.
Is there any other business to come before council?
Mr. President?
Yes.
On behalf of the Planning Committee for the Memorial Day Ceremony in Bowling Green, I'd just like to make an announcement, a reminder, that Memorial Day is coming up a week from today. The City of Bowling Green, there will be a parade stepping off from the area of the post office on Main Street at 10:00 a.m. It will proceed to Oak Grove Cemetery, where there will be a ceremony that will begin somewhere typically between 10:30 and 10:45, depending on when the last unit closes on the cemetery. And just encourage everyone in the community to come out and pay the respects to those who have fallen.
Okay. Any other business? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move.
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oh, same sign. We are adjourned.